Yes, I can. But Scott and Morgan are on Zoom.
Can Zoom hear us?
Oh, I see I'm conflating.
We can hear you now. Yeah, you guys sound good.
Ting, is that you on Zoom by chance?
Yes.
No, he can hear me.
Sorry, I made you guys go over there to sit down.
Gabby, I can't.
I don't know. Can the six oh seven person say anything?
It's probably the paper.
When the paper logs on, usually it says last call.
Laurie, do you feel like we're ready?
I do. I just wanted to see if that was Ting. But yes, sir.
Okay. In which case, it is six oh four, and I call the city council meeting of March the first twenty twenty-two to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Loretson.
Here.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Mayor Lobby.
Here.
Councilmember Lunaleo.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Green.
She will not make it tonight.
Councilmember Fregancy.
Present.
Councilmember Tharp.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask for approval of the agenda. Is there anything we want to add or subtract or modify on the agenda? Here we know that we didn't take a motion, please.
Loretson moves to approve the agenda.
Fregancy, seconds.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All were in favor. We have housekeeping matters. Anybody have anything we'd like to talk about before we get rolling?
I have a question, Mayor.
Please.
Do we have any applicants for deputy city clerk?
We do not.
Any updated strategies or?
We have discussed it. Go ahead.
Okay.
Yes, I've been using the community coffee pulpit every week to let everyone know. And we're going to post up at CMC as well on their job board. And so I'll keep asking in every forum that we have if people have ideas of where else we should be getting the word out. Or if you have people who might be interested, let me know. I have the position description or and so wherever you think we can get the word out or if there are other people, let them get get them in touch with me. That'd be great.
Great. Has has how expansive has recruitment been, like mostly local or regional or?
It predated me. I don't know if we do. We've obviously run it in the paper, correct?
We have written in the paper. I think we've also sent it out on on some bulletin boards. Nancy, do you have something you wanted to add to that?
I did. If you don't mind, I will. We had a meeting with our first local partner. So and there is that I'm connecting Colorado. There is a statewide job board. That's a no problem. It's free. So I wanted to.
We have gone to the Colorado Workforce Center and it's posted with them, so.
And I recommend rejuvenating.
Okay.
If you do you mind sending me that contact information? I'll get it out to them.
We also had a conversation. There's a weekly COVID collaboration call we have every Tuesday morning. And this morning, we were talking about that subject. There are all kinds of jobs posted all over Lake County that are not being filled. It's it's really becoming a problem for us as as a as a city and as a county. So not quite sure how we're going to crack that nut. What are you doing?
Pizza kids.
I have a couple, a couple items. I want to I want to let you know that that we have finally gotten a schedule for the people who are coming here from Alahis. They will be here. They get here the the evening of Friday, the eighteenth, pretty late, probably. We took them up from the airport about six. And then they'll be here Saturday and Sunday. We thought there was just going to be Sunday, but now it's going to be Saturday and Sunday. And I will keep all of you posted on on the activities. Anything you want to participate in, please, please join us because pretty joyous occasion, actually. And I really appreciate them making the tremendous effort to come here and visit. Huh? Alahis, Ireland. We did twenty with them last year. So they're our twin.
It's very important.
I wanted to talk real quickly about parking. The closing for that one small lot behind Western Hardware is March eighteenth. I'm keeping track of that. We have Cristiano has has given me a draft contract for community banks. I've sent that to them. I've given them a couple of days because the the guy that I'm dealing with has to take it upstairs. And but they seem very open to the idea of of a lease on that property. So we'll see how that turns out. We got a hard no from Lifetime Fitness because Boram, who's the the CEO of all of Lifetime Fitness worldwide, said he didn't want to enter into any kind of a contract. But what they are willing to do is if we let them know on weekends where we think we need that that parking lot, Boom Days might be a classic example, and Ski Joel. I can let her know, and I've already told her, we might want to use it for Ski Joel. And so that they are open to just allowing us to use it upon our request. It's not what I wanted, but it may take some of the 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 pressure off in big events. I'm hoping that that will happen. Next one is paving. I've been talking with and I'm going to the meetings next one, one this week tomorrow night and then one next week for sanitation and park. What we need from them is there is about a four-year plan. But what they're going to do, because as you know, Leadville Sanitation has to now replace twenty-five percent of all of its lines in each of the next four years. So a hundred percent of the lines have to get replaced because they're all seven years old and they're clay. So I I don't want to pave a street. If if any year or two, they're going to tear that street up. So I need to I need to see both their plans, and so I'll be talking to them about that.
So they're moving those sewer lines to the street? Because in my part of town, they're in the alley.
Some of them are in the alley, but not all. So that's that's part of what I need to know. Some are in the street, but you're right. Wherever it's possible, if they're in the alley, we don't have a conflict. But they may cross streets in places, too. And last thing I'll say is, you know, I made some comments about the hiring of the housing director at our city council meeting. The the Board of County Commissioners was upset with me. And so I did a couple of things. Number one, I said, I apologize if my candid, you know, upset you and and you think it may have caused a problem. But but here's my problem. And this is how I posed it to them. I said, I feel I am compelled to 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 communicate openly and honestly with city council. And the only time I do that is in a public meeting. You know, so anything I say, if I'm being properly forthcoming to city council, anything I say, okay, maybe you're not going to like what I have to say, but I can't not do that. So I just wanted you to know how that conversation is going right now. But I did write them a a note today, kind of explaining that to them and also saying, and also making some next step recommendations, which we haven't heard from them. So we'll see. We'll see how it goes. I I have to keep my hopes up. You know, we're going to do everything I've committed to doing, everything in my power to helping that person succeed.
You know who that person is, yes?
Yes, Jackie Whelan. She works in the assessor's office. All right, that's it for me. All right. Thanks, everybody. Next up, public comments on items not on the agenda. If anybody in the public would like to speak to city council, either on Zoom or here in the room, please let us know that you'd like to speak, come up and introduce yourself and give us your address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. We'll start with people on Zoom. Anybody on Zoom that's zooming in who would like to speak to city council on items not on the agenda? Okay, thank you. Anybody in the room? Okay, thanks. We'll move on. I show we have the approval of the minutes, and I looked at the minutes, but now I don't see them. So I know I had them, so someone else is going to have to. They're probably buried somewhere. I I've looked them over. I I found no. Does anybody have anything they would like to have changed in the minute? Here we know that we didn't take a motion, please.
Councilmember Fregancy moved to approve Tuesday, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two regular council meeting minutes. Phil, seconds.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All were in favor. Next up, we have presentations and discussions, and we have our city administrator, Laura Simonson.
Great, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for adding me to the agenda. I just have one thing I wanted to bring up this evening. The mayor mentioned today that the council would like to have a work session just for me and getting me on board and up to speed. And I was thinking it would be helpful for me to have a one-on-one session with each of you before we have a work session, just so I can kind of narrow down the topics for the work session that we might want, then put an agenda together so of things we might want to just prioritize or talk about rather than having the work session first. So if that is agreeable with you all, I will start sending emails to each of you to work around your schedules to do a one-on-one. I'm happy to meet. Whenever you are available, I'm I'm willing to meet in the evening. If you want to do it over food or something like that or on the weekends, because I know you all have busy schedules. So if that is agreeable to do one-on-ones with each of you, and then we'll, once I've gotten that accomplished, then we can do scheduled work session.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, Laurie, do you happen to have a ski cooper pass? Because that double chairlift is quite pretty long. We could get a lot of confidence.
It's a twelve-minute meeting.
It's it's good to know we think alike. Yes, I am more than happy to talk while we exercise or what we can. We can have outdoor activities and one-on-one. That is, I I'm totally on board with that.
Sounds fantastic.
Maybe our next city council meeting.
Great, thank you. And that's it for me.
Thank you all very much. So we'll be looking forward to you having those one-on-ones. And then if we decide as a body, we want to sit down and have a work session, a visioning session, we could still do that in the future.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I I think I think we should do that, yeah.
That's it?
That's all the trouble I've gotten into so far.
Okay. At this time, we have the appointment of Historic Preservation Commission. Let's see, do you have? There it is. At this time, we have the appointment of a new commissioner, a new alternate. We have a reappointment of one, a commissioner who has agreed to go, having completed a one-year term, to go to a three-year term. So I would ask each of those people to say a word to city council. We'll start with Mick. Would you come up and introduce yourself? And you also have their information in your packet.
How's it going? I'm Mick Lindquist. My wife and I, now, we just bought the Timberline motel at the end of the year. I've lived in Colorado my whole life. Went to see a few of us in that construction management program up there. And then for fourteen years, I ran a construction company down in Denver called Fifty Two Eighty Exteriors. Worked a lot with the Denver Historical District down there. Had to get a lot of permits, Boltrid City, and worked with them. So I have a professional background with them. And then personal background, we we basically remodeled an eighteen ninety-two house in Denver, right by the Chisholm Park area. And Mel and I, we just realized we have a huge passion for for preserving history in Colorado especially. And then the other building that's attached to our motel is that blue building that's right next to the Tennessee Pass Cafe. So that's actually part of the National Historical District as well. So we're doing a lot of work on renovating that. Yeah, I'm just excited to be in town, and I've got a three and a five-year-old that love it here as well. So we're planning on being here long-term.
Anybody have any questions for Mick? This is a mayoral appointment, but with the with the blessing of city council, is anybody who would have any objection to Mick's appointment? Okay, thank you. Mick, I hereby appoint you to the Historic Preservation Commission. Thank you for stepping up. Next, we have Nancy Bailey as an alternate. You you come right up and talk to us.
Hey, guys. I'm Nancy Bailey, Executive Director, interim Executive Director at the EDC. We prepared my speech today, but I also represent the the Leadville Ministry Program. And since taking the program over officially one-year anniversary, that's today, I think. So we're so excited to to kind of take things through program to the next level. And part of that strategic plan that we had was really making that that effort to create that connectivity between the activities that the HPC is doing and the activities that we are doing these. So yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity.
Any questions for Nancy? Anybody have any objections to Nancy's appointment as the alternate? Then, as mayor of Leadville, I appoint you as Historic Preservation Commission alternate member. Thank you. Steve, you're next.
And Mayor, I just want to let you know that Dana is upon.
Oh, she is. Okay. Oh, hi, Dana.
Yeah, I'm Steve Wintersen. I'm the Executive Director of the National Mining Hall of Fame Museum. I will be retiring in the end of that, but I've been on the Historic Preservation Commission for a year and a half. I've been involved with three historic renovation projects out of the National Mine, including getting grants from History Colorado. And I feel that we need to preserve the history and the historic aspect of Leadville because as we move away from mining technology or mining support for our tax base, it's going to become more and more important to draw on the historic character of Leadville for attracting people and supporting the economy. So I look forward to being on the commission for another year. The commission for another three years if you choose to have me there. After I retire, I'll have more time with the boat, too, than I have up to this point.
Does anybody have any questions for Steve? We're going to help you fill those retirement hours. Does anybody have any objection to to Steve being another three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission? Steve, thank you. As mayor of Leadville, I appoint you for the next three years of servitude to the Historic Preservation Commission.
The microphone might not be working.
Appreciate you guys so much.
We just. We just we just got a note that that the microphone may not be working properly.
Can you test it?
Everybody has to do it all over again.
One sec.
Isn't it been written on that microphone?
Thank you.
You could have brought it with you, you know. Is it working now? At this point, we're not actually going to need that microphone for the next part of this meeting. So we are, this is a joint public meeting with Planning and Zoning and city council for the purpose of of two ordinances that we're considering. And so I would ask for Planning and zoning to convene their meeting now, go through the deliberations, and then make a recommendation to city council.
Okay, I have a question about the process before we start. So the script is for you.
Yes, it is.
If I open the public hearing, do I also need a script?
You will not open the public hearing. You're just going to.
I know, but when we make recommendations, isn't that like a formal, more formal process? We can just go through and.
You'll you're just going to make a recommendation to city council. City council will open a public, the public hearing on these ordinances on first reading.
Okay.
Should we check with Christiana?
I'm just used to us doing our hearing and then them doing their hearing.
If you don't mind coming up to the, if you aren't going to tell us the process, you just come to the microphone.
So the requirement in code is that it is a joint public hearing. So the public hearing needs to be held jointly between city council and planning commission.
Okay. Will we do that after their deliberation, or should we we open the public hearing now?
Open the public hearing.
Be part of the public hearing.
Yep. If you just go through the script, that should follow all the processes.
All right.
Okay.
Talk me off the ledge again.
That's warranted.
Good evening. My name is Greg Lobby, and I'm the mayor of the city of Leadville. Tonight, city council is holding a joint public hearing with the Planning and zoning commission on three proposed ordinances. I believe it's just two, but. The third one is is has to do with the childcare. And so I don't think that's that's going to be a, is it?
Yes. The planning and zoning, yes, recommended that and did referrals.
Why, glad she's here. My goodness. Okay. A commit on on three proposed ordinances that would each revise the city's zoning. An ordinance, first one is an ordinance establishing formula business regulations for the city and amending the official zoning map of the city. Number two is an ordinance amending the procedures by which the city's zoning code is revised, including map and text amendments. And the third is an ordinance updating the city's family childcare homes regulations to be consistent with the new requirements under state law. I would like to remind everyone in attendance, this is a public hearing that is being recorded. To ensure we have a clean recording for any review of this proceeding, each person who speaks must speak one at a time. Must speak one at a time. Each person may speak only after that person has been recognized to speak by the mayor. The city council will be limiting the time for any public comments allowed at tonight's hearing to give everyone who wants to speak a chance to do so. Each person will be limited to three minutes each. The council will strictly adhere to these timelines. The order of tonight's proceedings, the order of tonight's is as follows. I will open the public hearing. Then we will follow the procedure for each ordinance, which will be presented one at a time. City staff will present information on the ordinance. City council and planning commission will then ask questions and discuss each ordinance with city staff. I will allow public comment for each ordinance at the appropriate time. Please only comment on the ordinance that is being discussed. You will have the chance to comment on each ordinance as it is presented. If you would like to comment on any any of the ordinances, please notify Lori Ty by raising your hand or typing your name into the chat. City staff will respond to the public comments as needed. The city council and planning commission will have another opportunity to discuss each ordinance and any questions with the city staff. I will close the public comment for each ordinance as appropriate. The city council and planning commission will will make any final deliberations and comments on each proposed ordinance. The planning commission will make a motion regarding planning commission's recommendation to city council regarding adoption of each ordinance. City council will then vote on whether to adopt each ordinance on first reading. Finally, I will close the public hearing after all ordinances have been addressed and voted on. Are there any questions about the procedures to be followed for this public hearing?
Just one question, Mayor, and maybe for Christiana. I know we have convened the city council meeting, and we've done a roll call, but we haven't done that for the planning commission. Do we need to do that? Okay, so then.
And I thought that was what we had agreed to today, but we'll we'll make we'll make sure that happens. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Okay. The time is now six thirty, six twenty-nine. And I now have opened the public hearing on the three proposed ordinances of ending rule title seventeen for formula businesses, zoning code amendments, and family childcare homes. Before we do the staff presentation, I will ask planning and zoning to convene their meeting and. Before we do the staff presentation, I will ask Planning and Zoning to convene their meeting and and do roll call.
Great. I convene the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting at six thirty on March first. Can we get a roll call, please? Commissioner Bauer.
Here.
Commissioner Hayler. Mayor Lobby.
Here.
Commissioner Law.
Here.
Chair Valer.
Here.
Commissioner Weston. Commissioner Zoo.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, meeting is opened. We can go back to your script.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I will ask the staff, city staff, to to present to us on the first of these, which is ordinance number, ordinance number three, series of twenty twenty-two.
Okay. And we are going forward with ordinance number three, Mayor.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance number three. As you can see from the very long title, is the formula business ordinance that City Council has actually seen before and provided some direction on. And this has also been before Planning and Zoning Commission. You can see in your packet that this is the updated version. There were a couple of recommendations from Planning and Zoning Commission. And those recommendations have been incorporated into the ordinance on page two of your, page two. Page one and two of your City Council communication form, you can see the summary of the things that have been added. These included before Planning and Zoning Commission sought the recommendations from City Council or a direction from City Council from Planning and Zoning Commission. We have a definition for personal services outlet. Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended after some discussion, and please feel free to jump in if I am misrepresenting anything. But based on my memory, Planning and Zoning Commission advised that no additional regulations on non-conforming formula businesses that are grandfathered in be adopted, but that we should better clarify what intensity of use means. And that's not the term specifically used in the city's code, but degree of use is, and they're essentially the same thing. So I have provided some proposed language to help clarify that. And otherwise, as you know, but also for the public record, this ordinance, generally speaking, forms a formula business exclusion overlay district that includes the downtown core area and a little bit of portions of other districts that are adjacent to that. And so that's why it's an overlay district. The ordinance also creates formula business regulations where formula businesses are allowed. As the ordinance is written, formula businesses would be allowed as a conditional use in the commercial zone district. And with that, if anybody has anything to add or any questions, go ahead.
Have the suggested changes been been put into this ordinance already?
Yes. Would you like me to point out where they are?
Yes, please.
Okay. Give me one second. Okay, so from the changes from Planning and Zoning Commission, the definition for personal services outlet, that is on page three of ordinance three. I'm afraid I don't know what page of your packet that is. Page two of the packet. Okay. Yeah, you see ordinance three, page three right there. If you look at the top of the page for the ordinance, that gives the page numbers that I'm referring to. In that section, that provides the definition for personal services outlet on that page.
Oh, down at the bottom of those. I got it. Okay.
Yep. And then the for the intensive use, or as it says in your code, degree of use, that is on page six of the ordinance, again, following the page numbers at the top of the page of the ordinance. The chapter seventeen point six eight amendments, that is the section that I have provided some proposed revisions for the non-conforming uses for those businesses that would be grandfathered in.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Where does the personal services outlet definition end up going in the proposed? Just the definition, where is it also referenced?
In other words, where would it be set forth in the code?
Yeah.
All of the definitions in your code are in chapter seventeen.
No, I mean, where is it used in the ordinance?
Oh, where is it used?
Yeah, where are we then referring to to personal services outlet as a form of formula business?
Yes, that's in the definition of formula business.
Okay.
So that would be on your page.
Definition, okay.
Right at the top where it says formula business means any restaurant, cafe, bar, lounge, hotel, motel. Yes, right in there.
Where did we end up on the real estate chains? Remember that came up?
If I remember correctly, I think that real estate businesses would not be included in this definition.
Okay, that is what we decided.
I know, remember we talked about.
Very narrowly defined what is.
Right.
Eliminated.
And we took out the broader language of just the any retail service. I don't remember exactly what the language was, but it was like commercial services and retail services or something like that at the direction of City Council from previously. We took that broader language out and included the bar lounge and personal services outlet. If you remember, we took a look at the table of uses and were like, no, let's narrow the definition and include these things.
My other question is on the table of uses, the seventeen dot four eight dot oh one oh. This isn't in the table of uses, it's in its own overlay section?
That would be in the table of.
Okay, so then my question is, if it's prohibited in all of these districts, then the overlay is essentially everything except commercial. So I we we talked about that before, where like the map boundary didn't quite make sense if we're also prohibiting it in all of these other districts, because then the map boundary is essentially the entire city, except where it's allowed. Because the way I was interpreting the language was it is allowed in TR, RC, TC, except not in the downtown areas out, like there, it's allowed outside the map boundary, but not inside the map boundary. So the Ps in this are, they're only partial Ps if we're going to use the map.
But maybe maybe it should say the formula business overlay district for fifty-nine rather than formula businesses.
Do you understand my question? I think that I understand what you're saying. But it's it's a, I agree, it's a little bit weird. If the commercial zone district is the only place where it's going to be allowed to have it here. But if it is going to be allowed in the commercial district, then this has to be a use that's put in the table of uses. For the.
But can we say like it's prohibited in the overlay and conditional or allowed outside the overlay? Because that's what we're actually trying to say.
If that's what you want to do, then we.
Because I feel like this is kind of saying something different than the map boundary.
Well, the reason that it's, so we we can, we can do it that way.
Okay.
Okay, so we can't do it that way. The reason it is this way.
Okay.
Is that, like I said before, when describing the overlay zone district, the overlay zone district, the formula business overlay district would include the retail core. It would include a part of, a part of the, gosh, a couple other ones.
RC.
RC.
And TR.
TR, right, and commercial, right? And so that, it's just excluded completely there.
I almost thought we need two lines, formula businesses inside overlay and formula businesses outside overlay. And they would have, be prohibited in some of these and allowed in some of these. I don't know.
So I think having.
See what you're saying, exactly.
I think having the overlay, just as far as like crafting the ordinance goes, right? Whatever you decide to do, however you allow it, that's that's completely fine. The chapter on the formula business exclusion overlay district, that is its own thing. As far as formula businesses outside of the overlay zone district, that's what should go on the table of uses.
Okay, well, then it should be allowed in those areas, not prohibited, because it's prohibited in the overlay.
That is a decision for you all.
That was my, that's my main comment, of like, we want it to be easy to use. So if someone says, I want to open McDonald's, where am I allowed to put McDonald's? That it's not like a good wellness chase for them to figure out, like.
What what we would need is is, as you suggest, I think we need another line that says, and these lines would be formula, formula businesses inside the overlay district and formula businesses outside the overlay district. And those might be different. They would be, they would be prohibited in R one and R two, but they might be, for instance, TC, they might be, you know, allowed.
Or conditional.
Or conditional. And then for TR, they could, they they could be prohibited.
Right.
And then in commercial, they would be conditional. Does that make sense? I I think that's the only thing that makes sense.
I I just disagree about the extra line, because your your part about the formula business exclusion district.
Yeah.
Formula businesses just don't go there, no matter what the underlying.
If we had one line, it should be for the areas of those zones outside.
Outside of the over, yes.
And then there's like, if you're inside, it's prohibited.
Period.
Outside, then you're heard of the line.
That was the point of the overlay district.
How do we do that?
Well, I think we've got it covered for the overlay district, what's inside the overlay district. That is fine. As far as what City Council and and what Planning and Zoning Commission would recommend and Planning, City Council would adopt, then look at the zone districts. Think about what's outside of the overlay district and what uses you want to allow.
We're going to use one line, and it's formula businesses, is that line. We need a fifth category for overlay district. We have R one, R two, TR, TC, C and.
Nope.
Okay.
So Mayor.
Yes, please.
So I'm just trying to track here. I believe that the way that this formula is business and the definitions and in the way that we're, whereas through this entire ordinance number three is that we are prohibiting formula businesses within the FBE, the formula business exclusion overlay, period. And then outside of it, we have number fifty-nine, which says formula businesses are prohibited in R one, R two, TR, TC, and conditional in commercial.
Well.
I'm missing.
To Gabby's point, then we don't even need an overlay district, because they're prohibited everywhere except in commercial.
Well, no, well, okay.
Except that says there is some commercial in the overlay district. So now I've confused myself completely.
I thought I had it, and then I didn't.
Okay, me too.
That's all I have, no idea.
Okay, talk me off the ledge, Christian.
I will do my best. Okay, so there are, the way it's set up is is that I'm going to repeat myself here, so I apologize. But the way it's set up is that there's a specific area, this formula business exclusion overlay district that completely prohibits formula businesses. In that area, they cannot go there. It does not matter if the underlying district, right, because it's an overlay district, there are really two districts, right? And so where, in fact, if you look, I think the exhibit to the ordinance, exhibit A to the ordinance, if you look at your map, you can see that black outline. That is where the proposed formula business exclusion overlay district would be. There are multiple underlying districts there, and so really there are, in any given area in this FBE district, there are two districts, right? The FBE, that's the overlay, and then either the C or the RC or whatever that's underneath it, right? And so what you're saying in this ordinance right now is that no formula businesses are allowed in this area. There could be different regulations for formula businesses outside that area. So far, the discussions have been, well, we do want to allow formula businesses in the commercial district. Right? And so that's why the overlay makes sense, because outside of it, there could be different regulations. And that's where the table of uses line comes in, is the outside portions where different regulations might be. And so thus far, the feedback that we have gotten is that only in the commercial district outside of the FBE overlay should formula businesses be allowed. And they should be allowed there as a conditional use.
I guess I thought maybe that that maybe TR and TC had different policies for formula businesses, but we're basically saying they simply aren't allowed. They're not allowed in the overlay district, they're not allowed in R one, R two, TC, TR. They're only allowed in the commercial districts that are outside the overlay district. Okay, I get it. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We could make a recommendation to change some of those zones to conditional if we wanted to for the areas outside of the overlay. So like.
Give me an example of what what might, a formula business that that might be in a TR or TC.
Mo's is the best example. I think they're kind of on the edge of whether they fall into the definition of a formula business. Some, you know, I don't think it quite made that definition, but let's say it was, let's say it did, something like Mo's that was a little more corporate-y, that fell more into that definition. It's in, it's up east sixth, right? Is it six or seven?
Yes, but it's it's in the overlay district.
Okay, well, let's say it was a block further.
Yeah, so it's on, it's on the opposite side of the street.
If it was a block further up the hill, would it be, would we want to allow that conditionally? Because it would be outside the district, but in a TC, I think. Yeah, in TC. That's an example.
I would say TC might be the only other district where maybe it could be conditional. What does everybody else think?
I would agree with them.
Any thoughts?
What is the nature?
I see it. TR is transitional residential, so it.
TC tends to have more of the business to home ratio, tends to be a little higher, like there's some historic garages and shops and restaurants, whereas TR is primarily houses with a couple businesses.
See, there's a TC zone adjacent to the commercial zone south of town where we may want to allow conditional use of a formula business.
So I I like that recommendation. I think we should make that part of.
You said just TC.
Yeah. Everybody agree with that?
And TC outside?
Yes.
And and also remember, we do have to follow the public hearing script. We've got to do public comment, we have to do deliberations, we have to have, we always get the planning commission.
No, I'm totally lost.
City Council do their vote. Well, I will, I'll entertain that in my, in my recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
We'll have in discussion. Speaking of Mo's, they are now in a overlay, because you've pushed it out a whole block. And now you've written that they can't change it. And the ordinance, they can't make any changes. And I do believe there was a rumor that he intended to put a building there, which would be much nicer than a food trailer. So now you've just, he can't do that. He can't even conditionally do it. He just can't do it.
Can you remind us what the the change process, is it a change of ownership?
I have a point of order.
Yes.
This is a commish, this is a planning commission meeting right now, is that correct?
No, it's still joint.
Joint.
So we should all participate.
It's both, yeah.
Everybody should.
I think that's a really good point. Can you clarify what the like, it's the same owner, but let's say they wanted to change the intensity of use. Or put a building, same use, but maybe more intense.
Let me, let me take a, just a second. Is everybody on Zoom? Can you hear this conversation okay? Okay, good. Just wanna make sure. If you wanna comment, please let us know. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so once, if there is a formula business in the FBE district. And this ordinance is passed, then upon the effective date of this ordinance, that becomes a non-conforming use. Right? The formula business use becomes a non-conforming use. Once they become a non-conforming use, that means they can't change their intensity or degree of use. And so putting new structures, expanding and so on and so forth, that would be prohibited as a non-conforming use.
So Mose would not, not be able to.
Do you make it conditional or already existing to come before us?
There a process for remedy or something? I know, no, I think this is a great point, because there could be more than one example. That's just the one that we can think of.
So how would we define intensity of use? Well, so they're gonna build a building, but they don't intend to serve any more customers.
I can't change any building, your structure.
Yeah, and, and that's typic, that's typical language in ordinances about non-conforming uses. Like if you're a non-conforming use, then you can't, you can't change it. You can make repairs, you can make it look nicer and things like that. That's totally fine, but you can't, you know, demolish a portion of your kitchen, kitchen to expand seating. Or add an extension onto your building so that you can serve more people. Or add a, I don't know, a, a coffee thing outside in your parking lot, or, you know, just something along those lines. So those are the types of things that would be prohibited. If you are looking at, or thinking about. Allowing some sort of expansion. For a non-conforming use, it should either be according to a previous approval. Like a conditional use permit or something like that. Or you would need to have a process for any non-conforming use or any non-conforming structure to. Come to you all and make that change, and so that you guys could decide whether that's an appropriate. Use, and, and again, it's, it's usually not much of a change that can happen for non-conforming uses.
We currently have no such process.
That's right. It's not typical to have that kind of process.
So this Mose case, because they presented something to us with the plans of building something new, does that fall under the? And I, I'm sorry, I'm new to the, all this period, so I'm trying to understand. Does that fall under the exception of the?
It could. If they have, if they have been granted permission to do that through a previous approval by the city. Then yeah, they would get, they would still get to do that.
Has that happened? I don't know that there was an approval of it.
There's just been some discussion that.
So then, does it make sense to then maybe delay this for her? No? I, I mean, I don't know.
Can the word it in the E? An existing non-conforming formula business in the overlay can cut, can. Ask for a variance to, to the specific.
We see in this sentence, the city does have the option to require non-conforming businesses to comply. With the city's conditional use standards for formula businesses, but it would be challenged to implement, implement, challenging to implement and force.
Yeah, and that was a slightly, that was in the context of a slightly different question. That question came up before. I believe it was more along the lines of, if we have these grandfathered in formula businesses. Then, and the ownership switches, and the owner wants to change the business or something like that. Then could we require that new owner to comply with the new conditional use permit standards in the FBE district? Even like the use is still allowed, but could we also. Impose those additional conditional use permit standards? That's what that's referring to.
Okay, but can it also refer to this other situation?
I, I guess I would ask what the purpose would be in asking, in this context. The formula business to comply with those conditional use permit standards. I think we would need to discuss that a little bit. But, which we can. But, you know, it would, it would be a similar process, if that's what you're asking, yeah.
I'm just saying, when, if the time comes when the owners of Mose do wanna make an upgrade. It seems like a good thing to me for them to apply for conditional use permits. They can keep their business. And go through the CUP process to assess the impacts and make sure they don't have a fifty foot sign or whatever.
There is no conditional use process for the overlay district.
Right, but I, or something like that, I just. I, I, there might be another example, but I think this is a really good example that's challenging.
Well, like, and it could be the gas station. I don't know if that's a chain. But maybe in the future, they want to put a charging station in or something. We're not even allowing that.
Gas stations weren't included, right?
They're outside the definition.
They're, yeah.
Oh, they are.
I have one for you, big R, what if they wanted to put a lumberyard in? Oh, that's right. I bet, they're on the other side.
May I ask a question?
Please do.
We don't currently have a CUP process for the overlay district. Could we, and how hard would that be?
I think for the situation that you guys are talking about now, that would be for non-conforming uses and structures. And so that would be non-conforming uses and structures. Well, one option I suppose would be to have some sort of permit process. For non-conforming uses or non-conforming buildings to come to the city and say, hey, this is what I wanna do. Can we do that? And we develop criteria for approval for that, to say what's okay and what's not. That's one option, but that would be citywide. You could do that process or include a process like that for the formula business district as well, if you'd like. But it would also apply to any non-conforming uses, non-conforming structures in the formula business district.
Can we say it only applies to a grandfathered in formula businesses at, at the time that those ordinance was had?
We could probably do that, yeah. Yeah, and, and in fact, we could probably do that in the. In the new chapter seventeen point three six, just add a section about non-conforming uses. And permits for alterations to those non-conforming businesses.
Seems like we either have to do that, we, or bring in the map boundary closer to Harrison. Or we're gonna kinda hose Mose and maybe somebody else. So that, to me, seems like the best option of those three, and perhaps there are other options I'm missing.
I would agree. I, I like that idea. What does everybody else think? That we would basically build the, the possibility of a conditional use permit hearing. For formula businesses that were grandfathered in at the time of this ordinance.
Does any of the, do any of the planning commissioners on Zoom wanna weigh in on the discussion?
This is Scott Power. I, I think we, we probably hit upon a good compromise on that. I don't think it's great to like, just try to write code for a particular business in general. But I think it's, I think that this might accommodate future needs. I think it's going in the right direction.
I was thinking the same thing, Scott, but I think if we make it at least broad enough to include formula businesses that existed. That were grandfathered in at the time of this ordinance, that that would be narrow enough that it would, it would work for us. Morgan, any thoughts?
Yeah, no, I would agree with Scott. It definitely seems like a, it's hard to, you know, quantify it for a specific. Situation, but seems like it's moving in the, the right direction as a compromise.
All right.
Any thoughts, Ting?
Yeah, I agree with Scott.
Can we do the public comment?
Yeah, we'll do that next, but, so we feel like we, we feel like we've, we've deliberated at this point, and we can open public comments.
Well, this is really just the initial discussion. But yeah.
Okay. Okay, at this time, I would like to invite anybody in the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance. Please come up, introduce yourself, give us your address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. On this, on this particular ordinance number three. Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion. Since it's not second hearing now, we have to do that by vote, so. Okay. Okay. So at this time, now we're in deliberation. Any other thoughts on this? I mean, my thoughts are, I love that we're doing it. I know it's a little more complicated than we, than maybe we had hoped, but that's okay. It seems like we have a, a nice way to, a nice compromise to give us the ability to deal with issues that they come up. For some of these formula businesses, rather than trapping them. At a point in time, so I'm, I'm good with that. What about everybody else?
I'm a little concerned about your definition of personal services. I guess you've discussed removing real estate offices from that. What about dental? Cause you're including chiropractor, but I'm not seeing dental. Or doctor's offices that, you know, like there's that clear.
I would like to echo Tracy's concern. The definition seems a bit ambiguous to me and open to interpretation. You might wanna close that door a little bit, be more specific on what types of businesses we don't want to allow specifically. Whether, rather than leaving the door open to judgment.
Would you like me to comment on your comments? Okay, that is, that is completely fine. We can, we can work with this definition. This is a proposed definition. We can absolutely work on it. This is a, a common personal services type of definition. Model after other ordinances that actually have a definition like this. And the uses listed here are exemplary and suppose, they're supposed to give you an idea of the types of businesses. So I, I want. I want to make sure that we don't, the city doesn't box itself in too much either. But being more explicit and specific about what this is, is totally fine. So if you guys have some ideas, please go ahead and tell me.
Yeah, I just, I don't wanna be debating whether somebody is a personal service outlet.
You still have to meet those, those standardization criteria, so for example. A dentist who owns their own office can still come in, but a comfort dental chain could not.
Right.
A doctor that runs their own clinic could, could come in, but a chain urgent care center could not.
May I speak to that?
Please do.
That, I remember that coming up in our meeting, and I had just been working on getting dental insurance for our family. And I was advocating to allow. Formula dental. Because the medical care we can access is so dependent on the insurance we can access. And for example, the insurance we can access through the Colorado marketplace right now. Some dentists in town don't accept that insurance, and so we could end up in a situation where. Based on the insurance landscape over which we have no control. We might end up with locally owned dentist clinics that don't accept insurance that most of our residents have access to. And so I think that would be a pretty unfortunate and consequence to, to. Something that I, I would generally support it. I would generally support that idea, except for that. Consideration of insurance, which.
All we're saying is it can't be in the overlay district, it could be in the commercial district.
So from my understanding, they would still be able to position here if they were to be in the red section of this map, right? Okay, so they would still be able to make a new office. It would just have to be within that section of the commercial map.
Or, or the transitional commercial in the future in terms of that change.
Okay, or, yeah.
Heard, and I guess assuming there's a space open there. So I, I think I would be inclined to leave room for that kind of dentistry or medical. In the overlay.
I would definitely concur with leaving healthcare. Any kind of healthcare option. An option to be in the overlay.
Don't need to take a chiropractor, massage, acupuncture, anything like that.
I still think we're talking about formula businesses, not just businesses. I, I, I think I disagree because.
You've never heard of massage and D.
No, I haven't.
There are besides, there are chain healthcare businesses these days.
Right, right, and so do we want, I mean, the whole.
Well, I'm just saying, I think we should be consistent.
Okay, okay.
Let's be consistent. They're in or they're out.
I still think I would be okay. This is about formula businesses, not about, you know, healthcare per se. And, and the formula, you know, the, the overlay is, is, is pretty small, you know? So, that's my opinion.
To respond to Cisco's concern, which I totally understand, but most healthcare facilities these days. They are not gonna wanna locate in a historic district because they have specific building standards and. You know, part number of parking spaces they need for their employees and. All the different things that kind of come with a healthcare building versus a regular building. They're not gonna wanna be downtown anyway. They probably prefer to locate in the commercial district so they can have a little more control. Over the resulting building, and so I'm not that concerned about excluding them from the historic. Area, and a lot of the communities I work in, they really try to keep their downtown people oriented. And businesses that people go to, like retail and restaurants and shops and places like healthcare and real estate. And insurance agencies, a lot of places are outlawing them in their downtown, even though they're like services. They're kind of dead services. They're not a place where you, that really adds to the vibrancy of the downtown. And so people are even trying to get rid of those types of places. I mean, you go to downtown Telluride, like every other shop is an art gallery or real estate. Agency, and then you have to go two blocks where you get to like something interesting where you actually wanna go into it.
Like a dentist's office.
Have those be in the upstairs, but not in the downstairs, things like that.
Right. I, I, I hear that and hear also the consideration that they could be in conditional. So I, I think I'd be willing to include them in. The definition of personal services outlet. Based on the fact that they could certainly be in commercial and then transitional. Commercial. Otherwise, it seems like a complicated. That seems like a complicated opening.
This is Scott Bauer. Typically, medical facilities, even in small shops, they create dead spaces in the evening. So they typically close at like, let's say four, four thirty. In your downtown commercial areas where you want people milling around congregating, they tend to create these dead zones. So like from nine to nine to five or nine to four or whatever, like they may have patients coming and going, but otherwise like they, they have no. Interest to anybody that comes through in terms of commercial activity. So just a side thought. So, and it seems like we have plenty of commercial opportunities on both ends of that overlay. So, just a couple of thoughts.
Thank you, Scott. Max, you had a comment?
Mayor, here we are in the typical uses may include but are not limited to beauty and body shop, salon mats, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And then the last two are tailors and shoe repair services. First of all, I think. They're both historic in nature.
They would have to be formula businesses.
That's right. So in that case, how many, I mean, I'm just thinking about shoe repair services, for example. Usually it's for like a whites or a red wing store where they have a shoe repair service. Whites and red wings are a formula business and I want my shoes repaired by a formula business. Not a, somebody that's just a cobbler on the side. And anyways, it's just a small point of order, but I think that's interesting that we. Identified tailors and shoe repair services as a, as a formula business that we would not want in our downtown. When if there was a formula business, it was a tailor. I'd probably want it in our formula business, in our, in our overlay district because it's pretty badass to have, pardon my language, to have a tailor. You know, I mean, where are they going to be? Like from New York City? I don't think they're going to want to be outside the historic district. They're going to want to be right in the center of the historic district if we're gonna have a tailor. If we ever get one. But anyways, I'm just wondering if we can strike those out because they just seem out of context for this day and age.
Again, I would disagree. I, you know, we're, we're trying to keep formula businesses outside of our historic. That, remember, we're talking about the historic downtown. I know we go a little bit beyond that on both ends, but we're talking about the historic nature of our downtown. That, that is, to me, that was job number one, to protect the historic nature of our downtown. So that's where I draw the line personally.
I get it. I'm just saying, I mean. Shoe repair businesses are usually. Two types and they're both formula businesses, right? And so if they're not gonna, anyways, I, I think I'm just, it's a moot point. I think it's hilarious that we have tailors and shoe repair services outlined in this. That's just my personal opinion.
I would disagree, Max. All of the, as, as someone who, who, who has frequented cobblers and shoe repair people in my day. Everyone I've gone to has been a small business that is not a formula business. And if you need one, I know a great one in Salida and a great one in Astus.
Well, I guess, I mean, Comito, Comito Shoes in Astus is great, but I'm just saying, how many formula businesses are shoe repair to begin with? Why are we isolating them? Town, name, name a shoe repair business that is a formula business right now. And then I'll say, let's keep it in here. I just think it's a ridiculous thing to have in this personally. I'm gonna just get off my soapbox now.
Put your back. Kim? You look like you wanted to say.
Well, yeah, I mean, either way. We need to narrow down what these personal services outlets are. Just want to reiterate that right now it's ambiguous. And it's up to, I mean, there's, it's subjective, the way it's written right now. I would rather it be black and white and, and no muddy water in that.
Oh, this is Scott Bauer. I wondered if Christiane might be able to speak to that. Like in terms of verbiage, I know that you were trying to keep it fairly ambiguous because you don't know what types of businesses might be appropriate. Come, you know, in the future, but I wondered, is there a good, like, is this kind of a standard in terms of verbiage? For this type of ordinance? So I wondered is, I wonder how else can we, is there another way to capture this or? Like I don't want to totally shut the door on everything, but. I don't know, I just wondered if you might give us some guidance or help us with some clarification.
Yeah, and I am actually pulling up, I had in the, a version of the ordinance presented to. Planning and zoning commission, a number of examples of definitions that I found. This was the one that I recommended because I think, I think this one is actually the most straightforward. And I, I, I personally thought that the related to personal needs and then giving examples of those uses. Created a. A flexible but clearer definition. So that's, that's why I proposed this one. I am pulling up those other example definitions. So if you give me a couple of minutes, I can let you know what, what those sound like. If there are any other questions or comments, Mayor, if we can come back to the other examples of this definition, that would be awesome. That gives me.
That would be fun.
Just gonna make one point. I think it's, it's, I don't know that it's possible to make it black and white, unfortunately, because. There would potentially be businesses in the future that we didn't even conceive of. So we like to give enough flexibility. So for example, the things I think of are, I didn't know there were such things as a place where you just go get your hair blow dried. Right? Like that is an actual business now. Just go get your hair blow dried or get your brows done. And so the question is, when we're doing this list, do we need to add those? And then do we need to add something else and something else? And then someone says, well, you added two hundred things and I'm two hundred one. And if you really wanted two hundred one, you would have added my one, so I get to do my one. And that's the point is, it just needs to be, unfortunately, there is going to be a, a little subjectivity in it. Trying to decide if a business that is just a hair blow drying place is a beauty or equivalent to a beauty or a barber shop. And that's just the nature of code, is that it's written as best you can to specify what you want. But sometimes it requires interpretation. And so we can, I think, look at the other definitions. If the, see if there are things you want to add, but I think it, the thing I checked to make sure it had was typically uses may include, but are not limited to. That's your, that's your key language there, is that you can look at future businesses that come along and see if they're similar to these. Or you think they fit the intent and spirit of this. And that's, unfortunately, I don't think we can make it. A list of everything we don't want to include. These are general sort of. Typical uses. Did that buy you enough time?
I would agree with, with Lori. We ran into this, as I recall, with the short term rental. Some of the verbiage in that ordinance where we kind of got into this long list of things that we didn't want. People renting out, you know, campers or tents or quonset huts or, you know, whatever. And it just kind of went on and on and we finally replaced it with that, some, something like Lori, what you were suggesting, you know, like. Not, not limited to this, but including and. I, I think we run into the, the same danger here.
Christian, you have a comment?
Yeah, if I may, so what are like the concerns? Cause I, I kind of lost that point at this point. What are the main concerns with it being a little bit ambiguous with what dozen, dozen define?
My concern is that we'll be debating it during the conditional use process. And that's, as Tim said, it's very subjective. Maybe you got a grudge against somebody's, you know, business. But my comment is when we had our work session on those, I think we actually sent to. P and Z to completely exclude personal services. And just do restaurants, bars, hotels and retail. Am I not remembering that correctly?
I think you are remembering that correctly. And I've kind of forgotten that. We, we, we narrowly defined what was not, what was not going to be allowed in the overlay district as formula businesses.
And can I, can I clarify Tracy? When you say completely exclude personal services, what, what do you mean?
So the only thing we wanted to exclude as a formula business was restaurants, bars, hotels and retail.
My, my notes from that meeting, the, the reason that this definition is in here is that. My notes from that meeting say that. One of the uses to, well, let's see. Might even be in the memo was. Right. So. There used to be that phrase, services and commercial businesses that were included in the definition of formula businesses. And during the conversation about how to narrow that definition. The direction, according to my notes, was to include personal services outlets, bars and lounges in the definition. Of formula business, but remove. That broader services and commercial businesses language. If you want to change that, we can change that.
So if we entirely take it out though, then a Taco Bell on Main Street will be not okay, but a cost cutters would be okay.
Yes, or a Jiffy Lube. That's a personal service.
Would, would the retail core designation protect the retail core from that kind of stuff? Some of the sufficient to ease concerns?
Interesting thought, yeah. I, I don't think those are being separate, but they still are to some degree.
I remember Rob talking about a Jiffy Lube. This is coming back to me now of like a personal service. That was a, a concern of some kind of like automotive type thing that. Would not be in that far as restaurants, retail.
A tire shop or any kind of. Thing like that.
That's not really a personal service because on table it uses, it would be auto repair.
I agree with Tracy.
So what do we, what do we want to do to craft this properly?
Well, I mean, the, the planning and zoning recommendation can be slightly different than the council recommendation. I personally, I'll ask the other planning commissioners, would like to keep personal services in as a list of categories that we want to exclude. But if the city council debates and does not want it included, I mean, you guys have the final say. So we can be slightly, we can disagree slightly on this point. I think we, the two I have in my notes for recommended motion. Are about changing some areas to conditional and then having the remedy for the non-conforming uses. But if we have differing opinions on the, whether to keep in personal services or not, and we can continue to talk about that.
Well, we could also hear your deliberation as well, so. At this time, I would like for planning condition to deliberate and make your recommendation to city council on ordinance number three.
Okay.
You guys started to do that, Scott, Morgan, Ting?
Yeah, I, I was hoping to hear from Christiana real quick on that, on that definition. I started to put you on the spot. Of services allowed, disallowed.
I didn't hear that.
Can you repeat that, Scott? I want to make sure that I heard you correctly.
Sure, I was hoping to hear from Christiana on that definition of services allowed or disallowed.
So, I, would you like to hear other examples of those definitions? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, I wondered if we had one that was comparable or. Or I, I forgot how, how we got to that definition, I guess. If there was any suggestions. On that portion.
Okay. So I researched definitions of personal services and personal, personal services outlets in other codes. I used one, the one that's proposed in the ordinance, because I think it covers all the bases and hits the point that. Lori, the city administrator made. And I also included, or I, I reviewed other definitions like these. This is. This is me reading these definitions out loud, so just bear with me, okay? Our VADA has a definition of personal services that reads like this. Personal services is an establishment engaged in the provision of informational, instructional, personal improvement, personal care and similar services. Such as portrait shops, photography studios, art and music schools, licensed massage therapists, driving schools. Handy craft or hobby instruction, laundry and dry cleaning, retail outlets, beauty and barber shops, shoe repair. And tailor alter, tailor slash alterations shops. So that's one example.
They got it in for your tailor.
Those tailors, man.
Max, you're never gonna wear well fitting clothes.
I, I also looked at Broomfield and Buena Vista. If you would like to hear those, I'm happy to read them for you.
Would you please?
I will happily do that. In Broomfield, a personal service use means an establishment that provides personal services for the convenience of the neighborhood. Including without limitation barber and beauty shops, shoe repair shops, bicycle repair shops, dry cleaners, laundries. Self-service laundries, bakeries, travel agencies, newsstands, pharmacies, photographic studios. Duplicating services, automatic teller machines and the healing arts. In parentheses, health treatments or therapy generally not performed by a medical doctor or physician such as physical therapy, massage. Acupuncture, aromatherapy, yoga, audiology and homeopathy.
That's half of our downtown.
I'm serious. We have two shops just getting ready to open. But they're personal services. Right. So is it saying it has to be both? A personal service that is also a formula? Okay, then, then I, at, at first I thought those, those were exclusive from each other.
No, the, the ordinance would be prohibiting those types of businesses that are formula businesses from the formula business overlay.
So you could have a, a personal massage business, but you can't get a massage and the chain.
Gotcha.
Or a comfort dental chain, but you could have a dentist.
Gotcha, thank you. Okay.
Any, any others?
Maybe it'd be easier to just prohibit anything that has more than seven outlets except offices.
Well, but we were trying to avoid things like gas stations and real estate businesses. And we, we were trying to keep it narrow enough. Did you, we didn't include all these things.
But now it's just like.
I know.
So this is Scott Bauer again. You know, it's, in some ways, I think like the original, the definition that Christiane landed on. Even though it has these, maybe some arcane terms, actually might work for us, you know? It's, it kind of sets the, the stage or the parameters and then the, if there is a business that is a chain. It kind of helps establish that without actually having to identify them specifically. Is that, isn't that the intent, Christiane?
That is the intent, yes.
Okay, so maybe that works. Sounds like it would have worked.
I'm getting more comfortable, but Kim? Well, I'm sorry.
Ting or Morgan? Do you have any more items of discussion before I take my crack at a recommended motion?
Yeah, I mean, it seems like the, the services make sense. It seems like there's always going to be. A small chance of ambiguity with some of these definitions and like, I, I know. We, and I, again, I don't know a lot about this process, but if there was a type of like. like, I, I know we, and I, again, I don't know a lot about this process, but if there was a type of like, because that, that situation sounds like it, it might come up unlikely, but it might come up. Was there a chance to do some sort of like conditional use? You know, where we make an individual ruling on it? It just, it seems like that's who are kind of being held up is making these um, kind of blanket statements on types of services where something might not fall into that category at some point.
I think that's where it says typical of, but not limited to. Then you still have to meet all the chain criteria. So, okay, I'll make, I'll do my best shot. I move that planning commission recommend the city council adoption on first reading of ordinance number three, series of 2022. An ordinance amending title seventeen of the Leadville Municipal Code to add a formula business exclusion overlay district and related formula business regulations and amending the official zoning map of the city to reflect the boundaries of such zoning district with the following changes that in the, I'm looking for the land use. Um, in section seventeen dot four eight dot oh one oh, the land use table number fifty-nine formula businesses be amended to say that, uh, formula businesses are conditional in the TC zone district and that, um, there is a remedy process that a non-conforming business that exists at the time of this ordinance can come before the planning commission city council for a CUP hearing, to address, you know, changes and non-conformities, conformities on their property. Do I have a second?
Our seconds.
Uh, Lori, can we get a vote?
See, we can't afford more microphones.
Okay, Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Mayor Lobby?
Yes.
Commissioner Law?
Yes.
Chair Waller? Commissioner Zoo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Does that suffice as a recommendation to city council? Thank you. At this time. Oh, sorry.
Is there a process? I, I apologize, mayor, just, just one quick comment regarding the process for non-conforming businesses to come, uh, to city council. I, I want to look into that just a little bit because I wouldn't want there to be um, an, an issue, and I don't know if it would be a legal issue or not, but that's what I want to check on for if there's a specific class of business that is treated differently from other ones or any issues like that, so I just, I just want to double check that before.
Would that be a CUP or a variance request?
Uh, I, I don't know.
Just a thought.
But that's, that's just a, a quick comment before you guys start your deliberations.
Before second.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Uh, at this time, we have a recommendation uh, from planning zoning on ordinance number three.
What's that smell? I can't wait.
Um, I would entertain a motion and a second on, on ordinance number three, and then we can go into deliberation. Who's brave enough to give us a try?
Would we have to repeat the formidable motion that Chair Waller just recited?
If you wanted, if you wanted that to be your motion, yes.
Wonderful and admirable.
She offered her notes. She did. Okay, thank you.
Loretta moves to adopt City of Leadville, Colorado ordinance number three, series of twenty twenty-two. An ordinance amending title seventeen of the Leadville Municipal Code to add a formula business exclusion overlay district and related formula business regulations and amending the official zoning map of the city to reflect the boundaries of such zoning district with the following conditions. Number one, that's section seventeen point four eight point oh one oh of the table of uses is amended to include a TC zone as a conditional use. And two, that there's a remedy process for grandfather businesses to allow changes.
Do we have a second?
One last second.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Yes.
I believe Max would like to speak. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, mayor, I, I'm going to get into this a little bit, this personal services outlet, so I'd like to see it changed this. Is number one, if we're concerned more about, um, Jiffy Lube, we should probably have some sort of automatic, automotive repair uh, establishment listed.
I, I agree with that, and I'd like to explain why, if you don't mind me interrupting you quickly.
Yep, and then now come back to my second point.
It's not allowed in the, in the current, uh, uh, RC district. However, that goes to the alleys. It could be from the alleys to, to Poplar and Pine that, that would be allowed, so thank you, I agree totally with that.
Actually, the overlay district does go to Poplar and Pine.
It does go to Poplar and Pine.
The overlay district does, but, but the retail core doesn't. And so, yeah, no, that, and so what he's saying is basically someone could open a Jiffy Lube between the alley and Poplar, anywhere along there, so.
Well, no, they couldn't because it's a formula business in the overlay zone, so it's not allowed.
It's, it's a formula business that doesn't, is not any restaurant, cafe, bar, lounge, hotel, motel, lodge. It's not a retail service.
Now, we could make that decision when it comes before us, you know, and that's kind of the point that Tim was trying to make. You know, how open do we want to leave ourselves to interpretation? But I, I would agree that automotive services should be disallowed.
Yep, and then to my other point, Councilmember Green, is there is no franchise shoe repair business in the nation, so why are we listing it out? I'm just saying.
There's not a franchise shoe repair business in the nation yet.
And so we're going to list it just in case we have one. I just think it's an antiquated, I'm, I'm saying that here we are in twenty twenty-two listing shoe repair business as a concern for a franchise in the city of Leadville. I personally think it's a very low risk to remove it because it's, it just doesn't, like, why are we putting these things in that don't exist anymore? Like, and there's no such thing as a franchise shoe repair business to begin with. So why are we listing it as a concern as a personal care service?
It strikes me as an equally low risk to leave it in.
I'm just saying, just be, just because our VADA and all these other things, nobody's had the, the frank discussion at city council to say, why do we have shoe repair business as a franchise concern? I mean, there is none, so why are we listing it? Is, I mean, I guess, I'm going to stop my, I'm going to stop my soapbox again, but I'm just wondering why we continue to put these antiquated pieces in here.
If I may, I think it's to get the idea behind what those services are providing across rather than because of those services specifically. So even though they're antiquated, the purpose is more so to serve that we have a general framework to work with rather than that being the service that's being provided, does that? Does that seem adequate?
I'm not going to fall over my sword on this one, but I am saying like, we don't have automated, automated repair in as a list, but we're going to have shoe repair service as one.
Show me your sketchpad, Max. Are you drawing a sword, though?
I'm, I've drawn it, but I'm going to put it away. I'm just saying.
He has, yes, please.
I, I would just like to make sure that I point out that this definition of personal services outlet does not apply only to formula businesses. This is a definition that will be added to your title seventeen. It is a term that is used in your land use table, and it would apply to that and any formula business that is also a personal services outlet. So this is a term that is already used in your code and your land, in your table of uses. It is not defined yet. Um, and so because we were also using this term in the formula business definition, that is why I recommended that, that it be defined.
I said my piece, I will rest.
Anybody else in terms of discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Are real estate agencies in the table of uses?
While she's looking that up, it is on planning commission's agenda to go back to our work with that consultant TJ. I don't know how, how many of you guys were on council. He was, we were about halfway down the road to consolidating our table of uses, which has over sixty categories, to a, an approach more like this where you have broader definitions and your table of uses can fit on one page. So you have like lodging and residential and commercial uses, and then you rely on your definitions table to then further define what those are, so you don't have a line for every single. I mean, we have a line for like small greenhouses, large greenhouses. I mean, we have a lot of consolidation to do. That's a silly example. But we can look up if real estate is currently in there as its own line or whether it's categorized as a broader category. So not that's exact service, but I think that would fall under, um, it would be row twenty-five if you're overlooking, it would, uh, professional and business offices. I think that's the use that it would fall under, so that's the use that's listed in your land use table is professional and business offices.
I'm just, I just asked the question because I don't want that to be confused with a personal service outlet. It's part of the code is to support our existing businesses. We do have an existing real estate office that is in the overlay district that would be considered non-conforming once this is passed. Now, would that?
Considered non-conforming?
Oh, no, it would be out, it would not be.
Right.
Included, okay. Gotcha. So that's why I don't want it to be confused with the personal service outlet.
There are years.
Cisco, yes, please.
On the topic of auto services and whether or not they would be non-conforming, I would want to make sure that electric charging stations uh, could be allowed in that area. I think it'd be very much in our interest to, so I would hate to create a definition where that was a non-conforming use.
Well, that would be the primary use of a property, right? It would be like a second.
I imagine a future where that probably is a priority.
Actually, there's one going in like Edwards, Gibson, Merritt.
Yeah.
You mean like a?
Like a super charging.
Gotcha.
And who knows what comes after.
Well, I can, I can tell you, I want to put in a second charging station uh, in a year or two beside the one that we have there, that would be a level two charging station instead of a level three. Uh, so, yeah, I have, I have future thoughts around charging stations, and, and they would be in the retail core because that's where they need to be. Okay, so, but it doesn't sound like it's, it's part of any exclusion.
It's in Sinclair, charging station on Tesla.
But even, even if it were, it, it's not.
Well, the gas stations are excluded.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't, I don't think it would apply. That's, that's my opinion. Christiana, would you agree?
I'm looking back at the definition now, let me get that back in my brain really quick.
Max advocating for putting auto services, right?
Yeah.
I have, or automotive repair.
So I don't think, so under the currently proposed definition of formula business, we have formula business means any restaurant, cafe, bar, lounge, hotel, motel, lodge, rooming or boarding house, any retail business, and any personal services outlet that constitutes as a formula, you know, that has seven or more others and all that stuff, right? So that definition, I, I'm reading that, I wouldn't include automotive services in there. And you have an automotive, um, use in your table currently. It's not written the best way, but it is there. So, um, and automotive services like that are currently a conditional use, it looks like, in your downtown core, in the retail core.
They're conditional in the retail core?
In the retail, I think that's the one. Did I skip it?
That's true.
Thirty-four.
Separate charging stations.
Yeah, that's, I think that's something we flagged. I need to go back and look at. Yeah, so in the.
Yeah, well.
TR.
This is why we need to change the land use table, because it's currently conditional in TR, RC, and TC, which is not good. But that's a battle for another day.
Yes, that is a different issue.
Well, I, for, for the time being, I would advocate to have, and how would you, how would you want to define it? Automotive, uh, repair
Yeah, because Councilmember Thought brought up a good point, is if, if there was a charging specific, I mean, I think that would be something we would want in our retail core, and so we have to be specific if we do want to add it.
Well, if it's not, if it's not an automotive repair, then if we have automotive repair services, and that would encompass tires and and Jiffy Lubes and, and.
I think automotive repair would capture.
What is everything?
I think that'd be really good to add. Want me to go back and change my motion?
No, we, we would have to change, we'd have to add it to our motion, just, just being an additive to that motion. Uh, so, uh, would the person who made the motion make that addition?
I would like to amend my motion to include under the definition of personal services outlet, automotive repair shops.
I would second.
Thank you. Good touch. We have thirty-seven more examples of that. Would, 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 uh, what does city council think about going to a vote? That was his first reading. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Tharp?
Yes.
Councilmember Fergenti?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leo?
Yes.
Mayor Lobby?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil?
Yes.
Councilmember Loretta?
Yeah.
I can tell you, I, I've wanted this for a long time, and though it's just first reading, we've been working on it for a long time. It turned out, as it always does, to be a little more complicated than we thought, uh, but I am tickled to death, so thank you all.
It's only first reading.
Okay, uh, so at this time, we close the public hearing on, uh, ordinance number three.
Beginning of the next one.
All right, you just go to the next one without closing the hearing? All right. Even the second readings? Okay, just for these three.
Just for these three.
Thank you very much. Got it. Uh, so next up, we have ordinance number four, series of twenty twenty-two. Chris Young?
Thank you. This ordinance, um, is an ordinance to change the way that Leadville's zoning code is amended, so there is usually a slightly different process, um, for changing a zoning code because it relates to property rights, and the planning commission has the, um, purview over the zoning code, so those types of code changes, unlike other sections of code, have a special amendment process. Currently, under Leadville's code, the process to make text and map amendments
Currently, under Leadville's code, the process to make text and map amendments to the zoning code is really old. It's really cumbersome and it doesn't need to be that way. And so this ordinance is proposed to change that process and streamline the code amendments for the zoning ordinance. You can see in your packet that there is an attachment to this ordinance and that is your current chapter seventeen point nine two. And specifically the seventeen point nine two point oh six oh. There are a couple of other sections there, but this is the main process that is currently under Leadville's code. So it has a number of public hearings. It has a number of referral, not a number, but it has a referral process and so on and so forth. And these are not typical standard procedures for making zoning code amendments. And it draws out your zoning code amendment process a lot, right? We're here tonight at this public hearing, engaging in this longer process. And what's before you in the ordinance is a simpler process or what I intended to be a simpler process. You can see on page three, again, looking at the page numbers at the top of the page of the ordinances. Ordinance number four, page three gives you just six steps. That's the procedure right there. Your current code doesn't differentiate between city initiated code changes and property only, only owner initiated changes. And those things require and should have different processes. Your new process or this new procedure would address those things. And it would also make sure that both planning commission and the city council sees these changes to the code. So essentially, if there is a change to the zoning ordinance, then it would go before planning commission. Planning commission would hold a public hearing, make a recommendation to city council. City council would hold a public hearing on it and make the ultimate decision. Instead of going through all of these different public hearings and joint public hearings and referral processes and so on and so forth. So that in a nutshell is what this ordinance is.
Thank you. And we've attenuated this somewhat by these joint hearings. But we, we learned a harsh lesson a few years ago in, in terms of, of how these changes take place. And it would take literally five, six months. I mean, it was really, really protracted. Do they have any questions for Christiana?
I have a question. So looking at what this, this applies to amend official zoning district map, the text of this title and the zoning classification. We're not changing any components of the P U D review process or a subdivision review process or anything like that. That's those are still staying the same. Okay. I just want to make sure that that's clear. Because some, I was looking at the, I'm working on a project and I was looking at their code and they had a, they had a ten step process for major applications like a rezone or a subdivision larger than X. And then they had a smaller, more streamlined process for smaller applications. And I was just kind of thinking through. Did you consider something like that of like a threshold of impact of whether you want to have a more rigorous review process for a really big applicant, really big change or is it small change? I mean, I think if the subdivision and P U D stuff stays in its own process, I think we should be good.
Yeah, so this does not address the processes for approving subdivisions or P U Ds or anything like that. This is purely for code changes for the zoning ordinance of the city. So this is just title seventeen code changes and that is.
Does it have any effect on vested rights?
No, it doesn't. That your vested rights provisions are staying exactly the same, but they are just being relocated, relocated because they were all mixed in with this process or they currently are. And with this ordinance, they just have their own chapter. So nothing is changing other than just putting them in a different place.
If we don't have any questions right this second, we'll, we'll return to deliberation in a couple of minutes. But right now, we would ask if there's anybody in the public who would like to speak to ordinance number four. Anybody on Zoom in the public who would like to, to, to speak to city council or planning zoning about ordinance number four? Seeing not anybody in the room? Still none. Thank you. In which case we will close the public input portion of this hearing. So at this time, I would like for planning zoning to deliberate.
This is Scott Bauer. It's not that this was a good housekeeping matter in that to move forward.
But we lost him.
I think he said it was basically good cleanup of the code and a housekeeping. That's kind of how I feel too. I mean, we've talked about this before. I don't think, I don't have any rabbit holes that I see currently. I think it'll only make things better. And we're hoping that like I was talking about earlier, we can do things like change the land use table and work on some of those projects in a much more timely manner after this is adopted.
Do you have a thought about the timeline for revisiting the, the, the use table?
I mean, it could happen soon. TJ has to look at the old drafts.
So you're in touch with TJ?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That's.
I mean, I think it'll take a couple of months potentially while we're waiting for other projects.
He was well away. So I think we, we had made a lot of progress.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I mean, my opinion about this from a planning zoning standpoint is it, it's a huge improvement in our process. It doesn't really, it doesn't attenuate the important parts of the process in terms of, of recommendations and public hearings. But it keeps us from having four public hearings instead of two. I mean, keep, you know, we, we were doing four public hearing before. So this is a much better process.
Any comments, Morgan or Ting?
Yeah, it seems appropriate. It's been twenty years. So, yeah. Seems like it's appropriate time.
Does
Yeah, I think it will be great if we can just streamline it a little bit better and just make it a little bit more efficient. So, yep.
Would one of our Zoom participants like to read the recommended motion? It's on page two of the agenda packet for this item.
We can do it. Is that number seven under proposed motions?
Correct.
Okay. I move the planning commission recommend a city council adoption on first reading of ordinance number four, series of twenty twenty-two, an ordinance repealing and replacing chapter seventeen point nine two of the Leadville municipal code concerning rezoning and zoning code amendments, adding a new chapter seventeen point eight four, relocating the city's vested rights regulations in amending section seventeen point five two point zero three zero of the Leadville municipal code.
Our seconds.
Lori, can you do roll call for a vote?
Commissioner Sue?
Yeah.
Chair Baller?
Yes.
Commissioner Law?
Yes.
Mayor Lobby?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We have a recommendation from planning zoning. I would entertain a motion and then then discussion, motion, second and then discussion.
City council member Luna Leal, I'm moves to adopt the ordinance number four, series twenty twenty-two, an ordinance repealing and replacing chapters seventeen point ninety-two of the Leadville municipal code concerning rezoning, zoning, code amendments, adding a new chapters seventeen point eighty-four, relocating the city's vested rights regulations and amending section seventeen point fifty-two point zero three zero of the Leadville municipal code on first reading. I further move to schedule a second reading of ordinance for city council's regular meeting on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Do I hear a second?
Third seconds.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Again, it's been a long time coming. Thank you, Christiana. Talking about it for quite some time. So please go here. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Council member Tharp.
Yes.
Council member for Gentry.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Yes.
Council member Luna Leo.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes.
Council member Hill.
Yes.
Council member Loretson.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you all who are in favor. At this time, we have ordinance number five, series of twenty twenty-two. Same process. I would ask for staff input, please.
Okay, so this last ordinance in the public hearing process is an ordinance that amends the city zoning code to update it so that regulations on family childcare homes, which is a specific defined term under state law, comply with state law. So basically the state legislature passed this House bill twenty-one twelve twenty-two. And what they wanted to do, or at least my understanding of what they wanted to do is to make sure that family childcare homes were more widely available to people and not having, and wouldn't have varying and more challenging local land use regulations. And so they passed this bill requiring local governments to treat family childcare homes as a residential use. I will say that it is a little confusing the way they wrote it about exactly how they intended some of these things to be played out in local zoning codes. But what this ordinance does is provide a definition for family childcare home, which just references the state definition. And then it creates family childcare homes. This is, do we need to make this? Okay, as a as a use in the table of uses. And it allows family childcare homes as a use by right across all zone districts. And the reason it's a use by right across all zone districts is because residential uses are allowed in some way, shape or form in every single one of your zone districts currently. And so to in an attempt to, you know, follow the spirit of this state law and allow family childcare homes to be regulated as a residential use, just like anything else, without any special regulations on them other than what the state puts on them, which is a lot. They have a lot of regulations under the state. That is why they are allowed as a use by right in this proposed ordinance in all zone districts.
A use by right, even if they were a formula day childcare program.
This is a family childcare home.
Just a family childcare home.
This is just
To the state, which is six kids or less.
It wouldn't be a daycare. So a family childcare home is different. And you can even see in the in the ordinance on page two, again, looking at the top. I proposed a definition for childcare facility because you have childcare facility as a use in your table. That would be your daycare center, right? But that isn't defined right now. And so to make sure that those two things are separate and not treated the same, I've created a definition for both.
Thank you.
And one last note about the home occupations. A family childcare home could be a home occupation and could be regulated as a home occupation, but as your home occupation definition is written in your current code, it has some things that apply to home occupations that can't really or shouldn't really apply to family childcare homes. And so this ordinance excludes family childcare homes from the definition of home occupation, makes them its own use in the land use table and then allows them as a use by right.
So would we have to have an additional line item?
For what?
Relative to that in our table of uses?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you.
If there was a zone district that, just to take advantage of it. There was a zone district that didn't allow residential at all, which we don't have. All of our zone districts allow residential in some form or another. Would that be a place where you could restrict family childcare?
Yes, as long as they didn't have regulations that are different from any other residential use allowed in that area.
Great. Any questions for Christiana?
It says, uh, local government can prohibit on a case by case basis operation and immediately adjates a residence or term or larger family childcare homes. I'm assuming it doesn't explain how we do that.
No, and in fact, the reason that I didn't see that, that's the thing. It's really confusing about how that would even happen. And so that's why I, I just left it alone. I didn't include anything about that in this ordinance because I, I think it would be a mess trying to regulate that. It could be on a first come, first serve basis. Maybe there's, you know, if there's one childcare home in a neighborhood and another one comes in, okay. But then what if another one comes in? Like, how do you allow parking and create parking, parking regulations around that? It would be a headache to create those regulations, I think. So that's why they're not.
I'm excited for the day where this is a problem.
They can at least have that problem.
I would love to solve that problem someday.
Any other questions for Christiana? At this time, I would like to open the public comment, a portion of this, of this hearing. Does anybody on the Zoom, in the public who would like to speak to us about ordinance number five? Please let us know. Seeing none, is there anybody here in chambers who would like to speak to us in ordinance number five? Still none. So at this time, we will close the public input portion of this hearing. And we would ask for fighting and zoning to deliberate, please.
Feel free to jump in, Zoom participants.
Hey, this is Scott Bauer. I'd like to make a motion to move this forward, if that's okay with everybody else in planning. I'm not sure if you can hear me. If you can't hear me, then I'll have to have somebody else read it.
I, we can hear you just fine, Scott. I, I think we probably should give everybody opportunity to at least comment, if they would like to.
I have a recommendation that's not part of this, but can we have a front page newspaper article that this change should incentivize childcare homes? I mean, it is such, I just, I'm losing my childcare. I, all my friends are in this circumstance. It's so terrible. I know people who had to move away because they can't find childcare in this community. It is critical to maintain our sense of community. Like, I literally stress about this every day. And if we can fix this and make it slightly easier and continue to work on it as a community, I like, I can't even tell you how many people this would help. I mean, there's people not taking jobs and people not able to expand their businesses because they're employees and people cannot find care or only part-time care. I mean, I'm in that boat. So I just really care about this a lot.
Is there anybody in the room that's on the childcare coalition? Are you on it?
I was, I just couldn't. I was spread too thin. I, I couldn't maintain that.
There is, there is a strong childcare coalition. They're looking for answers. You know, we're trying to help bright start with some funding for, for the city and county. I just don't know what else. I just don't know what else to do. I mean, it's a huge problem. And I have, I have talked to my legislators, to our, to Julie McCluskey and to Carrie Donovan, telling them that I have a fairly unpopular opinion that we've gone too far in terms of the regulations around what it takes to be a childcare provider. And I think that's a showstopper for a lot of communities and a lot of people, and especially in a rural community where you have to have two directors, literally two directors to have childcare for what is seven or eight kids right now. It doesn't make any sense to me, sorry. But that complaint has fallen on deaf ears, I'm pretty sure. But it's all part of the problem.
Ting, would you like to comment?
Um, yeah, I think it's absolutely great to make it a little bit more easier and accessible in such a small community. I don't have a kit myself, so I can't imagine the struggle. But I'm glad there is something that we can do to make it a little bit easier.
Scott, go for it. Go for your motion. I'm done.
Yeah, I'm all in. So I'd like to make a motion. I moved that the planning commission recommend to the city council adoption of the first reading of the ordinance number five, series of twenty twenty-two, in order, in the ordinance, amending title seventeen of the Leadville Municipal Code concerning the regulation of family childcare homes.
Ting, second.
We have a vote. Commissioner Bauer.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes.
Commissioner Law.
Yes.
Chair Vol.
Yes.
Commissioners Zoo.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. We have a recommendation from planning and zoning. Time for city council to deliberate. Anybody have any thoughts on this or any issues before we go to a motion?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Please.
Until women and families have affordable childcare, this holds back women in their careers and their lives. And it's, will never be equal until we have this kind of childcare level.
I would not only echo that, I might also say, whether it's the woman or man having to do this, and it usually is the woman. I get that. We are forcing families into poverty by only allowing one income. And and this is, to me, it's the most meaningful problem that's related to childcare.
So I also have a comment. Related to this a little bit, I also think that it's important that we do get this passed, obviously. Kind of have to stay law at this point. But it's also helpful to think about further, how could we support those families, especially our Spanish-speaking community who do have that experience, but not quite the legal background per se to be able to go through this, to support them, to be able to provide childcare. I know that the library's done some work across this in a very limited way before, not in terms of getting families connected, but in terms of providing childcare with a Spanish-speaking primarily childcare provider. And it seemed to be a very popular thing at the library. So I do think that maybe it's worth looking into as a city into how could we support our Spanish-speaking community in this process, in being able to go through this process. Given that, and I'm not sure if this changed, but usually it's not a very Spanish-friendly application, from what I understand.
Thank you. Any other comments or thoughts? Then I would entertain a motion, please.
I move to adopt ordinance number five, series of twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending title seventeen of the Leadville Municipal Code concerning the regulation of family childcare homes on first reading. I further move to schedule a second reading of the ordinance for city council's regular meeting on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Luna Leal, seconds.
Thank you. Rule call, please.
Councilmember Loretson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leal.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Fregency.
Yes.
Councilmember Tharp.
Yes.
Thank you.
At this time, we have completed all three of the ordinances under this public hearing. And we will close this public hearing at eight fifteen. I would suggest that we now take a six-minute and thirty-second break. We'll return shortly.
Brilliant.
Momentum. I'm gonna stand up.
Speak for yourself. Again, speak for yourself.
Can I pause the recording or do I need to mute?
Sorry, Greg. Didn't mean to pinch you off.
Mayor.
All right. We will reconvene the city council. The next two ordinances are second reading, so they are both public hearings. City council. But we will go ahead and get started. The next item on the agenda is ordinance number two, the series of forty-two twenty-two, an ordinance amending the Leadville Municipal Code to add a new chapter, two point five six, and many various sections to establish the position of city administrator, which council is is considering on second reading. City council adopted this ordinance on first reading on February first of twenty twenty-two.
Can I just say, I really hope this one passes?
Just as I need. Because this is the second reading and the final reading of this ordinance, city council will follow these steps. First, I will ask city staff to give any presentation or provide any information that they have to city council about the ordinance. City council will have the chance to ask questions of staff and have discussions with staff during the staff presentation. Next, I will invite the public to provide any comments on the ordinance that they would like city council to consider. Any member of the public who wishes to speak on the ordinance may speak one at a time. And each person will have no more than three minutes to comment. Finally, council will discuss, then vote on the ordinance. At this time, I'd ask for the staff presentation.
Okay, well, I will keep this presentation short because it is essentially the same presentation as from first reading. This puts into code the appointed position of city administrator for the city of Leadville and establishes the general duties of the city administrator. It also goes through, as the title says, various sections of the code and changes the duties from what was either previously a mayoral mayoral duty or a duty of the administrative services manager to the city administrator according to the city administrator's duties. That is it.
That was way too short.
Just right.
I do, it's not a question, but it's just a thought. We, we have noticed, and Lori brought it to my attention, that we will also have to change the city policy, personnel policy manual, some things that would refer to the city administrator. Any questions from city council? Yes, please, Teresa.
She gets to name the new street?
She gets to do whatever she wants. I think that's what.
I will send you my dog's name.
New street.
It's like, it's like naming a postage stamp, right? It has to be a dead person or, yeah, I don't know. There may be, there's probably some criteria.
Or a tree.
There are a lot of places that you go. Really? Okay. Did you know that was a thing? Okay. At this time, I would open the room to public comment. The public comment is officially open at this time. Is there anybody on Zoom in the public who would like to speak to city council on this ordinance? Hearing notice, anybody in the room would like to speak to city council regarding this ordinance? Still none. Then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing portion of this public meeting.
Hill moves to close the public input portion of the public meeting.
Fregency, seconds.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All were in favor. So at this time, we are in deliberation. If anybody has any comments or thoughts, and if not, we can move directly to a vote.
Just a question.
Please.
If I may. If we move to a structure that is not a strong mayor, but is a city manager, what do we have to go through and change all this again to city manager?
It would depend on your adopted charter, but yes, when cities or towns transition from statutory to home rule, there are usually a number of code changes that happen along with that. And so, yes, the, again, if you call the position city manager in the charter, then we would want to change it to city manager. The duties would be a little bit different if you're going to that manager council form of government, too, or it could be, but we would just have to see how the charter goes if if you guys go that route to home rule.
Any other questions or thoughts? Tim, quizzical.
Do we have to switch to home rule to to have to get a city manager?
No. No.
No.
We can remain a statutory city. We still have to move the ballot.
Right.
To change that code.
Okay.
Anything from you? Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Christiana or thoughts? Then I would entertain a motion, please.
Hill moves to adopt ordinance number two, series of twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending the Leadville Municipal Code to add a new chapter, two point five six, and amending various sections to establish the position of city administrator on second reading.
Fregency, seconds. Any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Councilmember Loretson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby.
An enthusiastic yes.
Councilmember Luna Leal.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Fregency.
Yes.
Councilmember Tharp.
Yes.
Thank you.
Does this go into effect in thirty days? Should we make an emergency ordinance or an order that may go into effect immediately? Sorry.
We can operate under the pending ordinance doctrine.
So I'm coming to work tomorrow?
Okay. Please. So next, we move on to ordinance number six, series of twenty twenty-two. This is also second reading. We are still in public hearing. Staff, please.
This is a simple ordinance in that it simply takes out the private parking sign program from your code for the direction of council. And so it just terminates that program. That is it.
We had, we had that conversation one month ago, and she said, you know, you never actually removed that in ordinance. So I said, hmm, okay. Any, any questions for staff? Hearing none. At this time, I would like to open the public comment portion of this public hearing. Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak to city council on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom would like to speak to city council about this ordinance? Seeing none, anybody in chambers who would like to speak to city council about this ordinance? Still none. We will close the public hearing portion. I would entertain a motion, please.
Councilmember Fregency moves to adopt ordinance number six. Pardon me. Pardon me. Pardon me. Councilmember Fregency moves to close the public comment period of this public hearing.
Thank you.
Thirty seconds.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All were in favor. At this time, we are in deliberation, but we could also entertain a motion in second and then have discussion.
Councilmember Christian Luna Leal moved to adopt ordinance number six, series of twenty twenty-two. An ordinance repealing chapter ten point twelve of title ten of the Leadville Municipal Code concerning parking permits on second reading.
Hill, second.
Is there any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Councilmember Tharp.
Yes.
Councilmember Fregency.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leal.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Councilmember Loretson.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, it is eighteen thirty-three, and this hearing is closed. On next up, we have Caitlin. You still here? You awake? We have resolution number nine, and this is one we we asked Caitlin to come speak to us about the about the surrender, particularly the surrender portion of of the animal fees. And please explain to us what you had intended with this.
Yeah, so with the surrender fees that I have presented, those are actually less than what was previously charged. Other counties do a flat fee of like fifty dollars, so I'm fine moving forward with that as well. The idea is if the animal doesn't have vaccines or isn't fixed, it's going to cost us more to get that done. And so far, we've done a sliding scale. So if the animal isn't fixed or doesn't have vaccines, obviously, we're not going to say you need to give us two hundred or two hundred and fifty dollars. We tell them what the price normally is, and we ask what they can afford. So if it's twenty-five dollars, they give us twenty-five dollars.
And does that work well for you?
Yeah. And it helps, you know, thankfully, we don't have people dumping dogs in the woods. We do have a cat problem. But so far, everybody's been able to kind of make their own price, and it's something that they're able to afford.
So let me ask Christiana, is this something where we should put in 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 this, in this fee schedule, the ability of Caitlin to use her her best judgment?
Yes.
Caitlin, I have a question. Sorry. Do these fees align with the county prices?
The county didn't have any suggested prices.
The county does not have a surrender fee.
Correct.
Okay.
So if you get a dog from the county, is there no surrender fee, or do you apply?
We do the same fees.
Okay. All right, that is, it seems odd, doesn't it?
Yeah, I just went through the ordinances with Chris and Meg the other day, so I didn't see anything.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, please.
Was this the intent between resolution number nine to make it so our fees were commensurate with the counties?
That was the hope. If the county's not interacting, is that what I understand?
Right. The county only has set fees for the licenses and then what like the tickets for loose dogs. They don't even have a suggested impound fee. So we've been going.
The same for the ones that they have.
For the license, they are.
Okay.
With this, yes.
Thank you. That was a great then, can, what, Christiana, what would you, what would you suggest in terms of the verbiage that would go along with these fees? And would it impact all fees or just the surrender fees?
Well, I.
Oh, sorry.
I would want to clarify first, if that's okay. So for the fees where you say that, you know, if somebody brings in a dog and or cat and surrenders them, and you just ask them to pay what they can, under what circumstances does that happen versus? Um, under what circumstances does that happen versus them paying the kind of regular fees?
So we do, I would say we probably have fifty fifty, a lot of people can't afford it, but if we can tell them like normally it'd be seventy-five dollars. What can you afford? They typically give us like fifty or sixty dollars versus like five or ten dollars. I think the least amount we've ever received was twenty-five.
Okay, um, and so you just, you just talk to them, you just take their verbal word for it, you don't request any like. Financial documentation or anything like that? Okay, um, and that's only for the surrender fees? Okay.
Adoption fees are also on a scale, but it's based off of what we have to pay for the vet fee, so if the animal already comes vetted, it's a lower adoption fee.
I don't know off the top of my head exactly what to recommend. I would want to.
We can continue this, uh, I'm sorry, Tim. Can we just make these existing fees the suggested fee? That way they have something to base their decision on whether or not they can afford it or or whether or not they can come close. To the suggested fee.
That's a great idea. Would that, you think that would resolve the issue?
I. Yeah, I I I think that that would, um. When. When cities have fees established. I guess the challenge is to, again, not um. Not charge different fees, like as the fees are set out, um, right now, the for, there's a rationale for. Um, the lower fees versus the higher fees for surrender rate, um. My hesitation comes from uh, having no real basis for when those fees are waived or discounted. Um, other than somebody's statement, I guess, so. I was just gonna say, so the concern I thought with the surrender, uh, the issue with having a surrender fee was that we didn't want to. Have someone not surrender an animal because they couldn't afford the fee. And I think we've addressed that concern with the sliding scale at the discretion of the animal shelter manager, and. I think as long as that discretion is exercised equitably, I think we're good. I think if you want to make everything a sliding scale, I think you're going to run into a problem of. There's, you're incentivizing people to bargain. And you may not want to, because adoption fees are different than surrender fees. There's a specific reason why we have, and if someone, so. Cities have to have a rational basis for what they do, and I think we have a rational basis for having sliding scale on that particular fee. But having set fees for other things because. Hmm, you know, hopefully, if you want to adopt an animal, you can afford the adoption fee, because you're going to have to afford food and some other things down the road. But surrender, you're actually giving up the animal maybe because you can't afford it. So I think, I think that if the system is working. If as long as it's applied equitably, I I think, are you okay with that, Christiana? Okay.
So how would we word it?
I I think you could, could you say, uh, uh, you know, surrender fee, it it's some put in there at the, you know, sliding scale. At the discretion of the animal shelter manager. Can you do that?
Could we change the surrender fee specifically to be a suggested fee for surrender rather than. And keep all the other ones as.
You know. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
So just one question first, Caitlin, how many uh, animals are surrendered? In the last couple of years to the animal shelter?
Years, I don't know. So far this year, we've had about eight.
Eight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and so it does occur quite often. Is there a way that um, we do, because the. Uh, what I'm hearing from Cristiano is that we're setting fees so we're not being arbitrary and capricious when we come to fees. And if we put a suggested fee on, it kind of is at the discretion. Is there a way to set a fee but then have that individual appeal based on certain criteria such as. Like their financial situation or the fact that they can no longer house the in the the dog. Or whatever it may be that that there's some criteria set forth that that she can weigh.
Would they submit that criteria? Sounds, it sounds administratively burdensome, I guess.
Well, if you make it too onerous for the person surrendering the animal, they're. Not going to do it. They're going to dump the dog in the woods.
So far, it's, it's been a conversation, so like the lady who paid twenty-five is because she was facing homelessness, so she still wanted to give something. Um, we told her, you know, we could waive the surrender fee, but she still wanted to give something for the dogs. Um, another one was a family just found out that they were expecting another child, and they already had children, and they just got a puppy. Thinking they would have time to put into it, so they also paid a surrender fee. I think they gave like fifty or sixty dollars. So we we do ask for, you know, what's going on in this situation, and it's not just someone bringing the dog and leaving it at the shelter.
We shouldn't fix something that's not broken, but again, go back to what what would the verbiage be to make that work?
Yeah, so, um. I I think um, having those examples from Caitlin are really great because we can see that, um. You know, uh, from those examples, I think that Caitlin is then using that discretion to waive or reduce the fees. Um, equitably, um, and for the purpose, right, that Lori was saying, that rational basis. For um, having the ability to make those fees waived or reduced at the discretion of the manager. So I, I think that, um. Because what this resolution does is add fees to the animal shelter. Uh, to to animal shelter fees to the fee schedule, what we could do is amend. The section about surrender fees. Um, we could even just put in parentheses behind surrender fees, maybe waived or reduced at the discretion of the animal shelter manager.
I'd be fine with that. Does everybody else think?
It seems fine. Would we want to put an intent like maybe waived at discretion in order to prevent? Something, or does that not even need to be in there?
I don't know that the fee schedule would be the place to put that, and this resolution is just adding the fee schedule. If you guys wanted to. Um, think about that for a. Uh, some sort of code change or something else, then we could talk about that, but I think that the. Fee schedule parenthetical, um, will suffice for the fee schedule at least.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or discussion? I would entertain a motion with the changes as suggested.
Council. I'm moved to a resolution number nine, series of twenty twenty-two, resolution amending the city's fee schedule. To adopt these for the Leadville County Animal Shelter with the following amendment. That under a surrender fee, a statement is added that the. It could be reduced or waived at the discretion of an animal shelter manager.
Fregency seconds.
Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please. Caitlin, thank you for hanging in.
Councilmember Loretson.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leo.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Fregency.
Yes.
Councilmember Tharp.
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you all very much. At this time, we have in front of us a public meeting planner. I want to just to note a couple of things that probably are not part of the public meetings planner, but uh, this Friday is the Nordic Knockout. Uh, it will be uh, on on Harrison Avenue. Uh, of course, Saturday and Sunday are ski drawing, and then Saturday night is the Intermodal Mayhem. Uh, so a lot of cool stuff going on. There are also events all uh, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night at Freight. Saturday night is a movie by Ned Warner. Um, so I'm looking forward to that. Uh, we have decided that on on the eighth of March, we are not going to hold a work session uh, at this time. Everybody's agreed to that. On on the eleventh is the, they're having a police reform uh, meeting at Freight. Um, should be very interesting. Uh, you know, Hal's going to be there, um, also.
Heidi McCollum.
I'm sorry, what? Oh, Heidi's going to be there. Also, uh, Megan, our animal control officer is going to be there speaking to the public.
What time is this at?
At six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Um, who's not going to be there is the sheriff. I don't know if you guys have heard, but she quit yesterday.
I heard she was going to quit.
I heard, I heard she quit.
Did she appoint an undersheriff before she quit?
I have no idea.
She did.
So she officially quit as well?
Pardon me?
Did she officially quit as well?
Uh, I think she has officially resigned, yes.
If there was no undersheriff, because she didn't have one before she quit, and the coroner would be the sheriff for it.
She had just appointed the civilian.
But he's.
He's not post-certified.
He's not up certified, can't be a sheriff.
Do you have to be post-certified to be sheriff?
Yes.
Yes. It's unless.
Or be an undersheriff.
That's probably good. I always wondered with the sheriff, like, do you have to be?
Yeah. Um. I asked about the stuff, but uh, it's it's off in the future. I do want to tell everybody that I I'm I'm going to take a week off from the twenty-first and twenty-fifth. Um, we'll be traveling. Any other changes to the public meetings planner? Thank you. Next up, mayor's report. Uh, I already talked about all the things I wanted to talk about earlier, so I'm done. Any council reports?
Uh, the issue of childcare came up this evening and, um. So I can share some updates from Bright Start, uh, one of which is we. We did find and hire a newly teacher, which is terrific. Um, our director is going to go on maternity leave soon. Um. And so we can't actually expand care because we've essentially just replaced that one teacher. So unfortunately, we won't be able to expand care. I am, I'm very happy to be able to say, though, that we are offering. Um, our full-time staff a twelve-week paid parental leave program, paid at a hundred percent. And I think that's the type of um, progressive. Uh, well, first off, it was, we can only do it because of the funding we've gotten from things like ARPA. And I think it goes to show the power of that type of public funding for childcare. And that's a big, been a big, one of the big hurdles for having childcare in our community is. Adequately compensated professionals, most of whom are women, many of whom are women of color. And so that type of public funding goes a long way to support. Um, having, being able to offer this terrific benefit to our directors, so I'm really happy to say that that's, that's part of the the. The constellation of change, I think, in our community right now.
Thank you, and thanks for all the effort. I mean, I know it's a slow burn.
It is, yeah.
Maybe we'll get there.
Yeah.
Any other city council? Dana, have anything for us?
No, just been driving all day.
Okay, thanks for hanging in with us. Uh, if there are no other city council uh, reports at uh, eight fifty, the city council's adjourned.
Ten minutes fast.
I know, way ahead.
Wow, we'd go.
Cristiano, thank you.